I thought you made it to step out and put the robes on. Are we on?
Why are you there? Get on over there. Oh, for the, oh, gosh, no. Lot of mercy. The blonde roots. Blonde roots.
The clock on the wall is not right, by the way.
Oh, it's not?
Look at your phone, it's five fifty-nine, about to be six. Unless you're on a Dallas Cowboy phone, it might be, might be less now.
Listen, listen, I was hurting, I was hurting, I was hurting for you. I was hurting for you, I was hurting for you.
That didn't sound like a good game.
It was sad.
I didn't watch it, but I saw the score.
Is his hand okay?
All right, it's six o'clock by at least the cell phones, so let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, the Edgefield County Council on September the twelfth, twenty twenty-two, at six o'clock. Thank you for coming tonight. We'll start with the invocation led by Reverend Roger La Duke of Living Hope Fellowship Church in Aiken, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Lord have me, Father, we just ask that you be present this evening. You have been so gracious to this county over the years, and you have blessed it in such mighty way, Lord. Last year you said to stand back and see what I could do. When the county was facing difficulties with LMOs and moratoriums and having to face what to do with their zoning ordinances and redistricting. And, Lord, you just took it and you resolved it, and we're just so thankful. So, Lord, we just ask right now that we, again, would stand back and this, see what you would want this county to do. As we move forward, Lord, we just ask that you would move forward with us. That as we take any steps, that you would be alongside of us. Direct us, guide us, give us the wisdom and discernment that we need, Lord. We thank you for all that you've done, and, Lord, we're just excited about what the future upholds. Thank you, Father, for this council, thank you for the citizens and the staff. And we just ask that we could be your servants, Lord, that we could be your hands and feet in everything that we do. Just bless our evening, Father, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. All right, as we get started, I'll remind council and I'll remind anybody in the audience who speaks, I should do this every meeting, and I'm sorry I don't. Having watched our meetings and having watched people like Planning Commission and others, if we don't talk directly into these mics, it is hard to hear over the internet. So I just ask you, anybody who speaks, please, and that includes staff, make sure you're talking into the mic, because you'd be surprised if you go back and watch. So just a reminder, please. As far as the agenda, I have no recommended changes. Does anybody want to, need to change anything around on the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? All right, Dr. Kenyon makes the motions, there a second. And Councilwoman Ireland seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes from the August ninth regular meeting. Is, are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some move.
All right, Mr. Talbert makes the motions, there a second. Dr. Kenyon seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. There are no guest speakers tonight, and so we have comments from the public. So I'll ask our clerk, do we have anybody signed up? I think we probably do. And I'll remind our speakers that you have five minutes max, and the clerk will let, let us know when you, at the four-minute mark and then at the five-minute mark. And I'll, we'll also say that if you were here to speak on one of the two public hearings, then you wouldn't speak here, you would speak at the public hearing on those two ordinances. So with that, Lisa Whitaker, I'll call on you.
What I came about tonight, as most of you may know, I'm on the Planning Commission. And we felt that there might have been a little disconnect between the Heritage Place and the reasons we said what we said, you know, and send it back to you. And my main concern, and everyone else's, well, thank you, Doc. But our concern was that maybe our reasoning did not come through, and we just wanted to kind of give you a little idea of where our thought process went. And we did discuss this for a good amount of time. We spent a great amount of time on it. So mainly, uh, this was a general commercial space. And we were concerned first to the retention ponds were at the front of the property there, and we felt that it was a safety concern, like people running down twenty-five as they may speed their little happy way down, and then maybe it could be moved to the back. It would be less dangerous for people riding on the road, okay? We wanted to make sure there was maintained twenty-five percent green space, which there is. We wanted the bus stop to be within the community, not out on the street where it's too dangerous for children to, you know, meet the bus. Now, the biggest issue, I do believe, was the Williams Road issue. And we wanted to totally remove that Williams Road issue from the whole thought process. There's not an entrance to this place from Williams Road. There's not one to the whatever type commercial space there is from Williams Road. So the non-residents of Williams Road really were taken and buffered away from that. And that was a concern of ours, because we knew some of us had been at that meeting, and we saw the passion and we saw the concern. So we said, okay, you've got Betis Academy over here, why not just take it away from there? So that's how we came to that. There'd be no access to the commercial space on the townhomes from Williams, and all access would be from twenty-five or the Betis Academy. And then there was the increase from the two hundred and two to, I believe, two forty-three lots, is that correct, Doc? Two forty-three. And that was just, that was how we came about. It was mainly safety and then offering the, the people who actually were going to live in this new space, maybe a gas station, a convenience store, whatever, that would also benefit the Williams Road folks too, you know, because they would have something close by, you know, gas or loaf of bread, whatever. But I wanted to just be open and transparent with you that, you know, we did give a lot of thought in this process. And if you, you know, if you have any questions, I'll try.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next, and I apologize, I'm not sure I can read the first name, is it Truesdale, last name? You're good? Okay. Then that's everybody who has signed up for the first public comment council. So I'll close that part of the meeting and move on to reports. Any council, any questions or comments about the reports? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is on ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-seven, in ordinance to establish a road user fee of thirty dollars per vehicle starting January one, twenty twenty-three. Is anyone here to speak on that ordinance? Okay, hearing none, council, I will close that public hearing and move to the second public hearing, ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-eight, in ordinance to set new dates for the appointment of boards and commissions. Is anyone here to speak on that ordinance? Okay, hearing none, council, I'll close that public hearing and we'll move to old business. The first item of old business is consideration of third reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-six, in ordinance to rezone certain properties located in Edgefield County. We've talked about it the last couple of meetings, um, from both the administrator and the assistant administrator, but I'll look at both of them and ask, is there anything else we need to know tonight on this one?
Nothing.
Okay, council, any other questions or comments you have on this particular ordinance? Hearing none, is there a motion to give third reading approval to ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-six? Mr. Cooper makes the motions, there a second.
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, under, um, excuse me, under old business, consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-seven to establish a road user fee of thirty dollars per vehicle starting January one, twenty twenty-three. Again, we discussed this last time, but I'll ask the administrator if there's anything we need to know from, about this.
Just a couple of different things. At the last meeting, there was some discussion concerning the fee going from twenty-seven dollars to thirty dollars. Two different reasons why we're recommending the thirty dollars. Five years ago, when the fee was set at twenty-seven dollars, I looked at the inflationary factor since that time, and if I used just inflation alone, it would have raised the rate to thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. We're all hoping that the inflation were, will be reducing in a few months, if not already. And therefore, we, I went back a little bit, I thought thirty hopefully will be close to enough. The second factor was the fact that when we eliminated the fee starting January of this year, we knew there was not, this was not going to raise enough to support that department. In other words, the scraping or the grading of all the dirt roads and putting asphalt down and doing gravel. But we did have some reserves, and so the thirty dollars helps cover some of that cost that we lost or the revenue that we did not receive. So again, we raised it to thirty dollars, knowing it doesn't cover all the inflation since twenty seventeen and knowing that it doesn't cover all the expenses that we have, but feeling that will be sufficient enough to get us by. We could always look at it later if it needs to go up higher, but we, I just wanted to state that since there was some discussion as to why we were increasing it by that much.
Any questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to give second reading to ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-seven?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions, there a second.
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, number three, under old business, consideration of second approval of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-eight to set new dates for appointment of boards and commissions. This is, of course, we talked about this last time, council, and this simply moves the, the dates, what is it, to March, so that newly elected council members can appoint people versus outgoing people, because some, some boards and commissions are all up at different times. But if somebody was up in November, that means an outgoing council member could appoint somebody, and then the, the new council member has to deal with that. And don't, doesn't get to appoint somebody they may want to appoint. So I'll look at the administrator and just ask, is there anything other than that that we need to talk about?
Other than the fact that I had to go through the same thing once before when I worked for the city of Aiken. By making that change, it really made a major difference. So I totally agree with this and think it's an excellent idea.
Questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to give second reading to ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-eight?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cooper makes the motions, there a second, and Dr. Kenyon seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Number four, under old business, is consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-nine to revise the plan development master plan for Heritage Place. So I'll ask the administrator if he wants to go through this with our developers.
And I apologize for not being here last time, I didn't think you would really want to have me here. There's an awful lot that, uh, council, when we look at NEPD, council has the ability and the right to discuss with the developer any changes that you feel are needed for that particular area. Last July, we had a lot of discussion with this developer concerning this particular area. We had come forward, probably a dozen or more people that lived on Williams Road, presenting different thoughts they had and concerns that they had concerning this development. You asked the developer to go and reduce the number of lots and to make some changes. The planning department also asked for a bus stop and to indicate where that was going to be on the plans. Everything that you have requested from the last meeting, they have put together within this set of plans. So they have met all your questions, concerns, um, and better, everything that you wanted, and you should have a new plan before you tonight showing those changes. So based on that, we recommend that you go ahead and approve this on second reading.
And I'll remind council, this is only second reading, so we got one more on, on this one too. But any questions or comments on the plan?
I just, yes, I'm looking. I see what everything has been approved, but I don't see the bus stop. I mean, we could be looking over there.
Right next to the playground?
Any other questions? Any other comments, questions from anybody on council?
Thank y'all, y'all did a good job.
All right, so if none, then is there a motion to give second reading to ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-nine? Dr. Kenyon makes the motions, there a second.
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Council, we moved to new business now, and under new business first is consideration of approval of the tax mileage rate for FY twenty-one, twenty-two, so I guess I'll call on Mr. Gilchrist.
Hope y'all are doing okay.
Let him adjust your microphone here.
Thank you. Okay, I want to start out, of course, it's tax time again, twenty-two, um, with the value of a mill, and that is up about five and a half percent from last year, based on where we are right now, which is good. Majority of that, obviously, is residential and vehicles, which, uh, you know, is going on the lower end, twenty-five, over the river. But it's going on kind of everywhere. You know, Orchard Estates is a nice area behind the country club that's doing really well. And they drive vehicles too, so things are moving on, excuse me, in that direction, and that's, that's good. And one thing I wanted to say was, you know, some people make observations sometime in the office or wherever, and they say, you know, Bill, there ought to be more money rolling in, you know, when you start talking about the value of a mill, like this year's going to be ninety-four thousand dollars. But about thirty-five percent of that, which this year is about thirty-two thousand of that, is under depreciation state law. And then when you get to the next year, you've got to make that up before you start seeing any gains. So I think that shows the progress that this county is making as far as the growth goes. And, uh, so anyway, good food for thought there. And also looking at residential growth in two thousand eighteen through last tax year, basically on a state report I do every year with the State Department of Revenue, looks like there's about five hundred and twenty additional houses currently receiving legal residence from eighteen through last fiscal year. And it doesn't have anything to do with the houses that are going to receive it when I calculate bills here tomorrow and they get out in the mail. So that can show you the numbers are, are really starting to go up, so that's a good thing. And, um, any questions on that? I want to go over the, really the big item of the year that you don't hear too much about, but fee in lieu of. Uh, currently, Edgefield County has six fee in lieu of listings going into this year. There's two new ones coming on this year, one Aiken Co-op and one, obviously, is Gennerac. This year, both of those places together, Gennerac's going to pump, uh, probably about seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars into the tax base, which about a hundred and fifty-five of that will go to county operations. And Aiken Co-op, about ninety-eight thousand with the fiber optic lines now getting out into the unserved areas, and about twenty, just about twenty-one thousand dollars to county ops, so that is huge. And, uh, based on everything we currently have, listings on fee in lieu of, with those two newcomers this year, looks like the fee in lieu of bills alone, which it'll only be eight of them, away from the value of the mill, will be about one point four million dollars. So that is huge. And obviously, Gennerac's a big player in that, and, and obviously, the jobs are a big play too for the county and, uh, surrounding counties, so I hope that continues on. Anybody have any questions on that? All right, so now we need to get down to road user fee slash millage reduction. Obviously, last year when I was up here, uh, council voted to raise the millage, county operations, six point nine mills. And basically, by reducing that back tonight to where it was last year going in at eighty-two point nine with the value of a mill, and what county is going to pull from reserves, that will meet your budget. Any questions on that? One other thing here I was looking at was the decrease, council votes on that. Not involved here, school bond's going to come down. So actually, when this goes through with y'all's vote back to eighty-two point nine, that's going to be a twelve point nine mill decrease. So, and then with additional local option sales credit money to code the tax bills the whole fiscal year, probably with those three combined, you're looking at probably a seventy-one dollar reduction on your real estate bill on a hundred thousand dollar home. But then when we get into January, obviously, the thirty dollar fee is going to apply. You know, depending on how many vehicles you have, uh, that's going to get eaten up pretty quick, but it is what it is, you know? So anyway, I think that council just needs to go ahead and vote on the eighty-two point nine, but that value of a mill and what's been pulled from reserve on the budget y'all passed will pull in what you need for the budget.
Anything else, Mr. Gilchrist? Anything else on, before we ask for questions?
That's all I got, other than thank you for changing the meeting. I think, I think Roger got the impression it was Arlene, and that was a good thing, because that's probably the only reason y'all changed it. I called the wrether two weeks before, the regular meeting, and she said, right now, I don't think we, they're not going to change it, you know, but you never know, and then I get the email from Roger and, uh, you know, start panicking a little bit, because this calculation, I mean, it's a little bit more involved in what people, what people think. And obviously, uh, the software group that we deal with, they deal with thirty-four, thirty-five counties. So the guy told me, he said, well, if we change the bill, it's going to be September thirtieth, and I said, that's not going to work. So I went to Arlene's office, and I figured that'd get me where I needed to be to get this done, so. But it wasn't, it wasn't Arlene, it was me. But thank you for that.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Before I ask for council comments or questions, Mr. Administrator, anything you need to add to this?
Just that, uh, when I got that call that morning, um, I, I had to put this in one of those miracle points. I, I started calling up different council members, and I was actually able to reach every one of them, including Jackie during her school time, and I thought, this is a miracle that if I could reach five council members in five or ten minutes, something good is going to be coming out of this. So, uh, thank you all for changing the meeting, because it really would have set us back and caused some serious problems. And this is a, what I look at as a commitment that we made to the citizens when we raised up the millage last year. And we said, okay, if the state makes the change, we promise to go back, and you are keeping your promise.
Well said. Questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve an eighty-two point nine millage rate rolling it back to twenty twenty-one levels?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Talbert makes the motions, there a second. And Mr. Cooper seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist, for coming tonight and doing that for us. All right, so next on the agenda, council, under new business, uh, is the consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety to approve the rezoning of sixty-seven point thirty-four acres of property from residential rule, rule to planned development sharps overlook. So I'll ask the administrator and probably the assistant administrator what we need to know about this one.
Let me start off by stating that this is a planned development. As with any planned development that comes before council, you have three options. You could prove it as is, in other words, as it was presented to you by the Planning Commission. You could deny it, and at that point in time, uh, it would not go to a second reading. Or you could amend it and make whatever changes you want to by working with the development or the developer concerning this particular project. This is a project that's just inside the county line. If you look where the county line comes in, uh, near Sweetwater Road, and there, it's actually at an angle, this just comes in, it gets into the area, which a lot of people refer to as Murphy Village. It's right in between that area. So it's right along twenty-five, this is a corridor that we looked at. And at some point in time, I believe we will have an overlay on it. But when the changes were made within this area, the frontage primarily along twenty-five was designated as general development, so it could have commercial in there, so this has some commercial. The biggest controversy that occurred at the Planning Commission meeting is they want over two hundred and sixty units on this development, and the Planning Commission thought a hundred and thirty-five was more appropriate. So one has a lot more density than the other. What they're looking at is these are going to be single-family lots, even though some are townhomes, some are very, very small, what I call patio lots, and then other ones are a little bit larger lots. It's also one of the things that the Planning Commission is going to be looking at in the near future, which is, I'll call it a cluster development, where you cluster your development in one area of the property, so you can leave more open space in the other areas of the property. But the biggest difference between what the developer has asked for and what you have before you tonight is the number of units. Planning Commission is stating they feel like it should be half the number of units per what the developer asked. And it gets into the comprehensive plan on should this be a village or residential suburban area. Each one, if you took the different, looking at it, one has, allows more density than the others. But this is the time when you have a chance, the developer is here to talk to him, hear from him as to, is there some way that you could come up with a compromise? Or is it something that you just don't think will work in this particular area? Do you want to add anything? So, did you want to add anything?
Our current comprehensive plan would only allow for 135 lots. So the issue is when you are negotiating with the developer, if you're going to allow more than that, then we also need to change the comp plan to village density. Otherwise, our comp plan won't allow that rezoning. So that comes with it. So I'm not going to say y'all approve them at 261, but let's say y'all approve them at 240. You'll still need to change the comp plan to match with the higher density because 135 is the highest level of density allowed by the comp plan currently. And that's where that came in with planning commission. And that's why their recommendation says, you know, you don't meet the comp plan, you need to meet the comp plan. County council obviously has the power to change the comp plan, but that's a determination y'all have to make.
Okay. Can you say the developers here? Is there a developer here? If you could go ahead and come up and introduce yourself, because I know we'll have questions.
My name's John Henderson, I'm with P&amp;J Development, the developer on the project.
So I'll open up to council in a second, let me just ask one question to set the stage. If we were to vote this to stay at 135 lots, would you build this subdivision?
No, sir. The value of the land doesn't warrant that amount.
All right, I'll open up to council, questions, comments?
I have some discussion points for council, but I have a question for you, Mr. Henderson.
Okay.
What I find attractive to your development is it's a true pud, or it's a true PD.
Yes, sir.
You've got elements of commercial in there as well as different levels of housing, which I think is part of the requirements. And you've got walking trails, extensive walking trails and roughly 32% of green space, 32% of lot is green space with only four acres, roughly is not developable of that 32%, right? So you've got true green space in there. My question is if we reduce the number of houses to some number, I don't know what that number would be, what number is required to include the amenity of a pool and the playground and the clubhouse that you have there?
The current builder we're working with requires, their requirement is 225 lots to be able to sustain the, between the homeowner association fees that it would require to maintain that pool. What you don't want to do is build that pool and then not have enough income from, you know, the residents to maintain it, and then it goes to waste. So in order to sustain that, maintenance of the pool and the walking track and the sports field that we have, you know, they require 225 lot.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
A couple of questions. So you've got three levels, really, well, four, two levels of townhomes, two levels of single-family homes. What's the price point, starting price point for each level, do you think, at this time?
So the price point on the townhomes range from 178,000 to 220,000, varying on the two sizes. Obviously, the smaller size being less. In units actually go from around 230 to 240. The in-units are usually about two foot, two foot bigger in width, which is kind of hard to tell on this plan, but the in-units are usually bigger. And the 42-foot lots are going to be somewhere in between the 250 to 290 range. And then the 60-foot, the larger estate lots, per se, are from that 290 to 380 gap, which is a wide range. There's just more plans on that 60-foot lot that they have to choose from, so.
All right, other questions?
Yes, so you cannot build this without us changing the comprehensive plan, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're asking us to change the comprehensive plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have a problem with that because we have worked very hard to get the comprehensive plan where it is. We've listened for years, we've worked on this, and we've got it to where the citizens want it. I am not in favor of changing the comprehensive plan. We have said over and over that we are in favor of controlled growth. It's our job to control the growth, not the developers'. We controlled it by setting a comprehensive plan that they can work within. We have plenty of other developers in this county who are working within the parameters of our comprehensive plan, so I think you can get in line with our comprehensive plan or this development doesn't go through like this. I'm not saying I'm against developing this property, but fall in line with our comprehensive plan.
Other questions or comments from council?
Well, I just have a question for council. When we look at page eight of our handout, we've got a C of GR and GC with four parcels that are zoned RR. What's already in that corridor is more dense housing. And so my question to council is really not specific to this development, but just generally. As we think about transitioning over the next decade, where utilities are existing or expandable? Because that's what will constitute the diversity of development, right? Which is what this is, is more diverse than the majority of our 500-plus acres, 500-plus square miles in the county. So how do we think about changing that in the future to areas where we might want to have village density, which provides amenities for the type of residents that are moving to our region? I'm not talking about large quantities of our 500 square miles, I'm talking about portions of our square county. How do we manage that transition? Or do we just say, "We're not going to manage that transition, this is it, we're not moving"? So that's an open-ended question for council. Based on economics of development.
I will, I will just say that the, I think we did that with the comprehensive plan. We did look at things like that. So the comprehensive plan, I think, already reflects that. Not that it's not an ever-moving target, but I will say that, you know, we complain about the planning commission from time to time, but I think they got this one right. And I appreciate the fact that they said to us, the plan development should meet our county's comprehensive plan. So I agree. I think if we can't meet the comprehensive plan, then for me, this is a no for this particular development at that particular size. Now, if it would go to 135 lots, everything else sounds great about this one. But without that, I'm not in favor of changing the comprehensive plan. Any other questions or comments from council?
Yes. Mr. Henderson. So there's no way you would agree with 150, 200?
Not to support the amenity pack, I mean, we would have to, not to support the amenity package and the concept of the PD that we're trying to achieve. I think, to both of y'all's point, the location of this site is, the surrounding areas of it is, supports the village density comprehensive plan. This piece parcel got singled out and there are some less dense areas that border this property. There's also several properties that border this property that are more dense than this. So, you know, in order to support the amenity package that we've got submitted, we can't, again, you don't want to build an amenity package and have a pool that falls down in five years because you don't have the income to support it from the homeowner association. It defeats the purpose of the amenities. And in order to get this developer, I mean, this home builder here, you know, there's some compromise area there to get to that 225 number, but to go to anything less than that, you can't make the numbers work, just with the cost of the land for the location. I mean, you're within a, I believe you're within several hundred feet of city limits of North Augusta. So whether this prop, you know, we use this property for this use, or, you know, we put it back on the market to sell because we can't do this, it's going to require either some kind of larger commercial use or larger density use because just the property value from being in that proximity, you know, drives the price of the value of the land so high that a shorter density will just, will not work. And it doesn't matter if it's me or the next developer down the road.
Let me make a comment. You did say this was singled out, you're right. I did single this property out because you're right. Surrounding it is not, it is much more dense. And you know what? That's Naken County. We're Edgefield County, we do things differently around here. We set a comprehensive plan, you work within our comprehensive plan. We did single this out to make this, so we don't look like that other side of the road over there. That's not what we wanted, it's not what the citizens said we wanted. This is what we worked to achieve. This was singled out for a purpose, and this right here is why.
Other questions or comments from council?
Mr. Henderson, I have questions for you, actually. I mean, and it may be irrelevant at this point, but it'll help us maybe think about it. What were the homeowners association fees going to be if it was 200 and, what was the original number, 261?
261.
And what do you think the homeowners association fees for maintenance would be if it was 40 less, 225?
I think the homeowners association, homeowners association fees for a yearly are going to be 450 bucks a year for a current density that we have submitted. And I think for, it would probably increase by $75 a unit to go to 225. And that is very rough.
Do you think there's a market for citizens that want those type of amenities in their neighborhoods?
Yes, sir. And I think in our package that we submitted for, you know, where the, that supports that from the home builder.
The other question I have is, who is the builder? Or do we know? If we were to approve it?
It's going to be a combination of D.R. Horton and Stanley Martin.
Well, again, to be clear, from my position, it isn't what this is, it's where this is. If it was located somewhere else that allowed these things, all these things are great. It's just where it is, is my issue.
So not for tonight, Mr. Chairman, if I may, a question for council. Where in our county would this fit?
Right, and I think the comprehensive plan tells us that very clearly, as do our zoning laws. So I don't, I think that's already been debated over the past three years. That's very easy to find in black and white.
So it's not, doesn't, there's no relevance with connectivity to utilities or sewer?
I think that was all taken into account, though, when we established the comprehensive plan. We've been this road before, we've beat this horse to death. The comprehensive plan was set together for our citizens based on their comments. It's not up, I mean, we're not rewriting, that's not what we're here for tonight, is to rewrite the comprehensive plan.
Okay, other comments or questions from council?
I would just comment, we've had zero complaints from the community about this project. We had a citizen that came forward about, and it was actually somebody that we purchased some land from during the planning commission, but we satisfied their complaint. So, you know, as far as comment about citizens, there's no surrounding citizens that, most of them would probably benefit from this and not be hurt, so.
And I would just note for you, this is first reading, we hadn't had a public hearing on it yet either.
Understood.
So we haven't heard from citizens as far as public here. Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to give first reading approval to ordinance number 2122790?
If I could just make a comment before you go forward. If it does not get approved tonight, it will not go to second reading or a public hearing.
Correct.
Just so you know that. And if it gets denied tonight, they will have to wait one year before they could submit another development for their property unless there were significant changes.
But they could submit this exact same for a different place?
They could take, yeah, they could, or they could take the plans that they have and come back and say, instead of 261, we're going to go ahead with 150, or 160, or 170, you know, in that same area. But if they're going to come back with something similar, they have to wait one year.
Right. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we ask, we approve it, asking him to design a new plan with 225 lots, which he said they could potentially make that work in this economy.
Second. Okay, there's the motion in second for, is it 225?
Yes.
For 225. Any discussion?
And that would still be out of compliance with our comprehensive plan, correct?
We would have to change it.
So yes, you would still need to change the village density. You could do that during the same process, but yes, it would still require change.
No, we have written this comprehensive plan, I am not in favor of changing it, so I will not support it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those against, please raise your hand. Motion passes three to two, Mr. Talbott, Mr. Cooper voting for it. The motion has failed. So moving on then, council, to new business number three, approval of bids for the foundation renovations at the Sweetwater Center. So, Mr. Administrator, you want to take us through these bids?
So we've got three bids. Two of them are local, one of them is from Canty Foundations, I'm not sure where they're from, I think they're from Augusta. How that all went about is our maintenance staff noticed the floor was sinking in one area, and they called Canty to come and review it and look at it, and that's how we got the first one. Obviously, after reading it, I did not, I did not agree with that first bid, so I talked to Roger about it. He told me to go out and get two more. So the other two are local builders, both of them perfectly capable of doing the job. Basically, the original seal plate on the building has rotted away and deteriorated. The original foundation of the building is very, very old. When the building was redone not that long ago, those seal plates were left in place as part of the original construction of the building. Well, they're failing now, so what they'll have to do is go in, they'll have to jack that section of the building up, replace the seal plate, and sit it back down, and then they'll have to refinish the floors on the inside. So it is, both of the contractors that are in there, Blackston and Greystone, are locals and perfectly capable of getting the job done. And it's got to be done or it will get worse, so.
So the low bid is Blackston at $23,300?
Correct.
And when this is done, I'm assuming based on what this involves, it looks like we probably can't rent it out for at least part of this work, because work would be going on inside and outside, right?
So they will be able to do it, you know, we can schedule a couple of days for them to work for some of it, you know, like lifting it and doing foundation repairs. We can say, okay, we're going to block it out Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, or Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, whatever we want to do. But when they go to refinish the floors, yes, it'll have to be shut down for that entire time because they, after they correct the foundation, that, those are original hardwood floors, they're slap floors. So they already are not perfect. And what they'll have to do is, once they lay it back down, they're going to have to sand the entire floor to be perfectly smooth and then completely restain it and seal it. So there's no, there's no way we can rent it out during that time. But the first part of it, we can probably arrange days for it to be off and on.
Obviously, if we block it off entirely, though, it'll get done faster.
Aretha and I have discussed this, and we're looking that we'll find one week where they could do the foundational work. And then if they could get in there and sand it down, stain it, and then it takes several days thereafter, go, let it dry. So we may have to go ahead and close down for a week to two weeks, the second portion. But the first portion of working on the foundation, we'll specify to them, coming on Monday, we need to have it back open on Friday.
But the first portion of working on the foundation, we'll specify to them, coming on Monday, we need to have it back open on Friday.
I think all of us will, will agree the work probably has to be done, obviously, but, um, I would just ask, let's, you know, try not to do it around the holidays when people might want to use it or wedding season or whatever it may be. We need to look at the records and see when it's the least used time and maybe this is the time of year. I don't know. But I know it's going to interrupt somebody's something, so.
For the next three months, we have it booked just about every, well, every weekend and multiple times on our weekends now that you've opened up the policy.
We need to do the best we can of this, you know, if we can.
Understand.
I mean, I, I know you do, but, okay. Questions or comments from council?
Chairman, I make most, we go ahead and with the lowest bidder.
Okay. Mr. Talbert makes the motion, we accept Blackston's low bid of twenty-three thousand, three hundred. Is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. And the last item of, um, of new business, normally that'd be under the consent agenda, but when we only have one item like this, we don't have a consent agenda. So, uh, this is just simply the consideration appointment to the Board of Assessment Appeals. This is replacing a vacant position. Any questions or comments about that appointment? If not, is there a motion to approve that appointment?
I may.
Okay. So Ms. Ireland makes the motion and Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. We're down to public comment, section number two. So I'll ask the clerk, do we have anybody who has signed up? And down there, I can't see it. Nobody has signed up for, all right. So there, I will then, council, close the public comment section and move to the administrator's report. So I'll move to the administrator's report.
Administrator report? Sorry, we're tired about sanding and sealing and.
That's a good thing to talk about. We didn't have any public comments, so you, you, we're straight to you.
Okay. Hey, since I wasn't here last time, I have probably a little bit more to report and talk about. So I'm, I wrote it all down so I could be a little more concise. Uh, this is concerning the Law Enforcement Center. Uh, we opened the bids for the Law Enforcement Center on Thursday at two o'clock. Yay. Uh, we expect four bids and it'll take us a few days to evaluate the bids for accuracy and comparison. We expect the bids to be in the range of thirty-four million, nine hundred thousand. Now, you all have been hearing thirty-eight, five. That's because this price is just to build the building and the site work. We have additional costs that are not in the bids. So we are going out and buying our own furniture, fixtures and equipment. Uh, instead of having the contractor do that, we could get state prices and they're not going to charge that extra fifteen, twenty percent that they would charge if they bought the furniture. So we're, we're doing that on our own. This also includes architectural and engineering fees, construction, testing, property acquisition, attorney fees, uh, bond costs. All that totals up to three million, three, three million, six hundred thousand dollars. So if you add the two together, that's where that thirty-eight, five comes in. Now, the price of thirty-four, nine also includes, uh, two alternates, one for some additional paving, uh, in the wash area. The other one is for a pre-engineered training facility and for sheds for the vehicles. So if our prices come in too high, we could always step back and look at doing that at a later date. So, uh, right now, our quarterly CPST collections, the capital project sales tax collections, has kept up with our architectural and engineering payments and property acquisition. So right now, we still have about nine hundred thousand dollars available in that account. The final council approval of this project will be at the October eleventh meeting. And that'll be the last that you'll have as far as approvals or any other official action on that building. It'll take, uh, the selected contractor about a month to obtain the necessary bonds and insurance, at which time we'll provide a notice to proceed. And the selected contractor will then go ahead and schedule a time for groundbreaking, hopefully November, December timeframe. Any questions on that? No. We're basically at the finish line. We're ready to cross. Uh, nonprofit board, I have to thank them an awful lot. We've had several conference calls this past month to develop the Law Enforcement Center bonds with our attorneys, the bond attorneys, the financial analysts and underwriters. So you get on these conference calls with like eight or nine people, uh, and I think you had a hundred and sixty-some pages on that ordinance. We're now up to two hundred plus pages, uh, for all this stuff here. Great reading. Once council approves the bids in October, we'll complete the bond documents, prepare to advertise their sale. The sale of the bond will occur around the first of December, a few weeks before the first payment request should be received in the, from the contractor. So everything's falling in line. We'll have the bonds out for sale, we'll get the money and then we'll go ahead. A few weeks later, we'll probably have our first, uh, draw on the money. Once all that's done, they sign all the documents, that board will still be meeting, but they only have to meet once a year. That's by, it's the bylaws and state laws that they meet. So their job will be completed. Any questions on that? Okay. Emergency management Foster, uh, has been working now for about three months. He's caught up with all the paperwork. Uh, he is now going to start meeting with each of the fire departments. So to see if he or the county could help in any way so that they could provide a better job, uh, to meet the needs of the residents within the county. Uh, this could be with grants, helping to find new firemen or helping with any training that they have. It currently takes about two hundred hours of training for a firefighter to get certified. And that's an awful lot for a volunteer to put in. So we're going to try to find a way to have those classes for online, to do whatever we can here in the county. And we may be coming back to you for finding some ways to give them some numeration, uh, for attending all these classes and to getting that classification. We desperately need more people and we desperately need them to be certified. I want to give a, a big shout out or recognize Aretha. Last Friday, uh, I was with her and she got three calls Friday evening from one of the renters at the Sweetwater Center. So having these multiple rentals are great, except we now get some calls on Friday because people who have been used to coming in the day before to set up for a Saturday event and not having to pay, showed up on Friday and said, why is somebody else here when I'm getting ready to decorate? And so she very diplomatically worked with the Friday night renter and then met with the Saturday renter so that they could pay some extra money to come in early to set up. And that's just shows the dedication that Aretha has in not only Friday evening during her time with her husband, but also on Saturday, uh, to get the job done. So I, I just want to recognize her. She is also going ahead, uh, and working on a new rental agreement. We need to make this a simpler process. Right now, if I want to rent it, I have to come all the way up to the office, fill out several forms. You have to stand there for about fifteen, twenty minutes filling out forms. Then they write out a check. Then she checks it all over. Then at this time of the event, they have to come up and get a key. Then when the event's over, they have to come back and return the key. So they're coming up to the office three different times and the center is located about twenty, twenty-five minutes from the office. Uh, a lot of these people live in the southern part of the county. Some live in Augusta, North Augusta. We get people from all over renting that facility. So we're going to go ahead and set up a form that they can fill out online. They can either write a check and then mail it to us, or we're going to eventually get it where they could go ahead and make online payments. We are also going to go ahead and get a digital type of a locking device that every week we could change the number on it. And then we'll just give them a code. Hey, the code this week is nine, one, seven. And they just go ahead and use the code to get into the facility. On Monday, we'll change the code to something different so that, that same people can't get back into that facility. You have a question?
I'm sorry to ask a question before you are finished, but I think if we could get internet capability to that building, we could change the code.
Yeah. We, we are looking, we are looking at that. The other thing is if we have internet capabilities, they could determine when the person's coming in. Because as soon as they enter that code, oh, they came in at four in the afternoon. They weren't running until six o'clock that night, or they were supposed to leave at ten at night. And that door didn't close till one in the morning. So we're, we're working towards that. So it's taking it one step at a time, uh, to make it easier for the citizen, to make it easier for staff and to better serve our citizens. So that's all in the works and hopefully in the next thirty to sixty days, we'll have more that we could, uh, talk to you about that. But currently, and you only started this about thirty days ago, we have three fourths of our weekends have our, got more than one booking now. So again, thank you for allowing that. Thank you, Aretha, for all the great work that you're doing. Just an update on the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan funds. We now have received our second check. We have over four million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our savings account and we're earning interest. We earned over eleven thousand dollars in interest this past year. And that's when interest was at a very low rate. During the first year, we spent seven hundred and sixty-one thousand on premium pay, stormwater rehabilitation, business recruitment and a broadband study. This year, we have earmarked one million, four hundred and twenty thousand for various budget items like purchasing this building, the five hundred thousand dollars for the hometown grants that we're, uh, supplying, et cetera. This leaves us with three million dollars that has not been allocated. We'll be discussing this at our next council meeting as to how we want to allocate some of this. At the next meeting, we'll be talking about a new radio system for all the fire departments, sheriff, EMS, et cetera. Uh, that we'll, so that we'll have the exact bids and at that time, we have to discuss how we're going to go ahead and pay for it. So the easy part is getting the bids. Hard part is always, how are you going to pay for it? About a week ago, you received information concerning the unveiling of the Judge Keesley portrait. Uh, the more, the majority of you responded that we would give them a thousand dollars towards the reception, uh, for re- refreshments and to help set up to defray the cost. I've heard from the majority of you and unless you have, uh, an objection, I'm planning to send them a check this week to help to defray those costs. And that again is why we're changing the meeting to the eleventh, uh, so that on the fourth, if you're available, if you're in town, if you're not, uh, like some teachers may be off for that week, uh, that event will be that, that afternoon. Last week, we handed delivered a request to the state to ask for eighty-five percent of the one point one, one, eight million dollars that we need for the Barton Road storm drainage flooding issue that we, uh, have had a problem with for decades. Most of you know that we're in a lawsuit because of it. Uh, we finally have developed a solution. Doc last week met with a homeowner who is willing to sell us their property. It's a little over five acres. It's got a double wide unit on it that we may be able to keep on the property and build this detention retention pond, or we may just sell the building itself. But we're going to go ahead and look at buying it for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, put the pond in that we need. It'll be right at the corner of Brighthop and Barton Road. So as you're going down, it'll be right in front of you as you're entering that area. We met with the citizens. Uh, this is what they had requested. And after Doc met with the, um, individual, uh, we were able to come to an offer that, uh, they were willing to leave willingly. So we now feel we have a solution. We feel there's a good possibility we could get this grant. Uh, there's nine hundred million dollars that the state has provided for infrastructure work in the state. And two hundred and sixty-three million of that is for smaller projects. The smaller projects are for jurisdictions that are, have thirty thousand or less population. So let's say, uh, Aiken, Aiken County cannot apply for those grants, but we can because our population is, uh, under thirty thousand. So that money can only be spent in the smaller counties and smaller jurisdictions. So, uh, we're hoping we'll receive that good news sometime early next year. So that's where we stand on that project and we're real happy with it. And one last thing I just wanted to say is, um, I've been working with our finance director, Taz. And she was put in a very difficult situation last year where within a two-month period of time, uh, our entire finance department staff, uh, left. And there were some reasons for some of that. But it was right during the audit period. She was dealing with the auditing numbers of a, the previous year that she was not involved in. And it was very difficult. I wanted to let you know that Taz is going to, starting this month, uh, going to some, uh, local government financial classes that Lynn Strom, who was our finance, uh, director and was our administrator previously recommends, uh, for her. It's classes that she sends a lot of her finance staff to. And we're also getting Bruce Cooley to come back a few hours a week, uh, through this audit period to help get her, uh, through this area and to help her get to where she needs to be. So it's, um, uh, it's been difficult. You know, doing things first time, not having to ever done a budget, not going through this audit like she has. And, uh, but Taz is, is ready and willing to go ahead and do whatever it takes and working with Bruce and, and attending those classes. So I really thank her for that. That's the end of my report.
All right. Um, I, I did have one question for opening up to council is, um, uh, I was thinking maybe we get an update on broadband. Do you have any update on the broadband from Aiken Co-op?
I can, but I'd rather see if, uh, one of our council members that, uh, working with that, uh, give that report.
Yes. I would like to give this report on behalf of Jackie and myself, um, as we are the liaisons with Aiken Co-op for the broadband. Um, we spoke with, uh, Gary Stukesbury earlier this, um, who is the CEO of Aiken Co-op earlier this, last week. And he said that as of September sixth, Edgefield Substation Circuits one, two and three were lit and marketing for customers. And currently there are about one hundred and twenty to one hundred and thirty connected or being connected off of this circuit. They are just starting to market Edgefield five and six circuits. So he expects people to start coming in on that very quickly. Um, the Lick Fork, which is the west side of the county, Circuit Four is ninety percent installed. Um, there was a little slowdown for about a week or two in the work there, um, but I think it's back on now. And he said that he expects that area to have broadband in forty-five to sixty days. He said, and this is a quote, we're pretty good shape on the eastern side of the county. But in regards to the Sage Mill and Bettis Academy areas, he said that would be later, the latter part of this year, they're going to be focusing on that area. And the first part of two thousand and twenty-three, the other areas in the county will be seeing it. Um, he says that if all goes well, that the entire project should be completed by two thousand, mid two thousand and twenty-four. I think that's some good news. We waited a long time, but we know it's coming. I'm just incredibly happy and impressed with the speed at which they've been able to bring this to our county. And, um, I know a lot of us are anxious and we've been waiting for it a long time, but just be patient. Know it's coming to the Aiken Electric Co-op customers and should be here soon.
Thank you for the report.
Just, just a little bit further on that is when they, when we originally met with, uh, Mr. Stukesbury, their goal was sometime at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, early part of two thousand and twenty-four, that have the entire county, uh, provided with broadband. As we all know, there's been two major issues in the construction industry over this past, uh, twelve to eighteen months. Finding workers and finding. 12 to 18 months, finding workers and finding material. So for the first six months to a year, they were only able to get out one or two crews instead of five or six crews, and then they started running out of material. So what they did is they ordered material all the way through the end of the projects. Normally, you would try to order a little at a time to keep up with what you're doing, so you're not having to spend all your money upfront, so they went ahead and ordered all the material. So they're back working with the schedule that they wanted to, they're just a few months behind, but I'm, I am, as was stated, just very, very encouraged. They have kept their word, they have really put everything together, and a year and a half from now, we're gonna be in great shape here in the county. There is one area of the county that is not currently scheduled to be served. There has been a couple of grant requests made to the state. The state has $400 million in broadband money for the entire state to serve some of the underserved areas. We sent a letter of support to some companies on their behalf to ask for grant money to serve those areas that are currently not planned to be served by Aiken Electric Co-op or not being served currently by the two companies that are here in our county. So we're hoping that that'll take place. If not, then we'll have to, at some point in time, determine how we're gonna get those areas served also.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council for the administrator?
I don't have a question, but on last month, I did, I could be wrong, but did we congratulate Mr. Talbot for graduating from South Carolina County in August? I don't know, did we?
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I just think that you congratulated, if we did.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, South Carolina County. Yeah, you know. Appreciate that.
All right, if there's nothing else for the administrator, then I just have very brief comments. First, thank you for your work tonight, council. I do want to announce two upcoming meetings of the county council, so that everybody will be aware. First, county council will meet right here tomorrow at 4:00 PM. The reason for the early time is that we'll be conducting interviews for administrator and executive session. That means that will only be an open, open session for about a minute before and after the executive session. We will not be making any announcements after the executive session. So for council, I know I'll see all of you at 4:00 tomorrow here. Second, the October monthly meeting of county council is being moved from October 4th to October 11th at 6:00. And as you heard earlier from the administrator, we're moving this meeting, so council can attend a ceremony for Judge Billy Keasley at the courthouse the evening of October 4th. So that's all I have, there being no other business. I'd be happy to entertain the motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cooper makes a motion, sir, a second.
Second.
Ms. Ireland, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah. In the day.